Okay, it's February twenty eighth, five oh five P M. And I'm calling tonight's regularly scheduled meeting of the kind of waiting planning board to order. First item up on our agenda, there are, well, we're going to start with an application for an approval not required for a parcel on Wolver Road. What am I do? Over here, I'm gonna share, we have physical maps of the A and R here, and I'm going to do a share screen from this other laptop, so.
Brent, what was that name?
Um, it's an A and R, an approval not required for Beans and.
Oh, the Beans are now, okay, thank you.
Okay. Share on screen, I'm gonna share this one. Done this right? You should all be able to see this map. Okay, alright, now, um, typically, we give the, we open with a little overview of the, the plan from property owner and or the surveyor, how would, uh, who would, who would like to lead this? Harland, you're here, Brett?
Doesn't matter, I mean, basically, it's pretty self-explanatory what we're trying to do here. We've cut out that piece of property for hopefully Brett and Kaylee to build their house up on the top of the hill. The.
That's just, um, it's not quite a flag, it's a flag lot.
It was supposed to be a flag lot, but, uh, some different interpretations. We rescinded that application with the Z B A and decided that this was a much, this was a better option.
Okay, so it's not designated a flag lot?
It is not a flag lot, okay. No, it has its legal frontage.
Sure.
It has its legal frontage. Now, the only quirk with this lot is my mother's driveway, which is property that my mother and I, you know, I own, and she has a life estate there. If you look at the bottom where Brett, Kaylee's driveway is, you know, their property comes into whoever wrote that triangle there.
Yes.
That is, that would be, my mother's driveway would be on that piece of property.
Okay, so this is your mother's house?
Yep.
House number eighty-one?
Yep.
Existing driveway traverses that little triangular piece?
Exactly right.
Exits to the road at the frontage of the flag?
Yep.
Or the non-flagged?
Frontage of the lot.
That's right.
And so.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify for me why you say that, uh, without this additional triangular portion, this lot has the required frontage?
No, with the triangle.
Yes, that's right, I misunderstood.
Yes, with, the way we have it now, it, it's not a flag lot. The way we would like it with this A and R is not a flag lot.
Yes, understood.
It is shaped similar to a flag lot.
Right, it's flaggy, but not.
Yeah, to, to not require a flag lot, that's why we've included this in the book, you know, or, um, putting an easement after my mother's driveway.
Where's the two hundred square, let me know if you need frontage?
Yep.
Yeah, the two hundred feet of frontage for lots without public water.
That's right, right, correct.
Um, so that, where it says proposed drive to match existing going down for your mothers, that's not gonna be built?
So that where it's slashed is her, is her actual driveway?
Yep, yeah.
The proposed drive match line, I'm asking for a courtesy on the town's part. My mother just turned ninety years old.
Yep.
She's battling with some things that you can imagine a ninety-year-old woman is.
Right.
And the last thing we would like to do is add any confusion, disruption to her life.
Sure.
And, uh, you know, we feel it's, her driveway is technically, you know, off that lot anyways, as you can all see.
Right.
Uh, and has been for years and years and decades and decades, but the last thing I and my family would like to do is upset my mother.
Sure, sure.
So if, um, in the future, if you sort of sell that property, you, you, it would be possible to make that go down on her frontage, but right now, you don't wanna disturb.
Yeah, she has plenty of frontage on that lot, so it, it, you know, by doing this triangle, it doesn't, like, you know, she still has a compliant lot.
Hmm, I see. So let me just make sure I fully understand what you're saying, and what we might potentially be agreeing to, or and also understand what we have the power and authority to agree to, right? Um, so you're saying that, that the, the A and R request before us is to modify the, the existing parcel that doesn't have that triangular piece and simply add that triangular piece to it?
Yep.
And that is the extent of the A and R request for the purpose of enabling converting this lot, uh, giving it the required frontage so it could be a building plot?
Correct.
And then, your, what you're saying is that, right now, the current situ, the current use of the land has this existing driveway to your mother's house going through that triangular piece. But what you, somebody else, Laura's, oh, I, okay, so Laura's coming, very good. So, um, so what you're, you would like to do is leave the existing driveway in place. Essentially, this is an arrangement between, within your family, right, because Kaylee and company
Yep.
won't presumably object, um, to having, you know, in, in some sense, somebody else's driveway running through their property. But, um, but that's the idea, now what you're saying is that if and when that, um, house eighty-one lot is sold, it would, it would be a map, so then the.
House eighty-one actually has two driveways. The second one is not shown, the second driveway is on the other side, um, so. But the garage and everything is accessed through this driveway, so that's why, you know, in the future, and in that, in, in the A and R request, I believe it has a time, a hundred and twenty days roughly, um, from.
So, I'm sorry, in the A and R, I did see Kaylee sent a quitclaim deed.
Yes, that, and that's it.
Okay, that, I don't think we have the paper of the quitclaim deed, does it arrive? I didn't actually notice until today. Um, so it was, uh, but I, I have it and I can share it.
It's completely reasonable, you guys wanna do.
Yeah. My mind.
While I'm, while I'm looking, I thought I had saved that.
While you're looking, could they explain what the driveway is that's drawn on the lot eighty-one that goes to the road?
So Judy, do you mean this part that's marked as proposed to match existing, or this existing?
Proposed to match existing.
That.
Is that what?
Proposed to match, to match existing is not there right now. That driveway is not built, that is not.
But you are planning to?
So.
No.
I thought that was.
Hopefully, my mother stays, you know, living for a long time, and, and we don't have to disrupt anything for a long time, but at some point, potentially, that will be moved.
Okay. Cause I, it was my impression that that was the application for the common driveway, okay, fine.
No, the common driveway application is on the other side. Yeah.
Great, okay.
Let's see. There. Are there any other questions? I.
I don't think we need the quitclaim deed, do we, Brett?
I don't see why, I looked at it, and it, it feels to me that that's not something within the, I mean, yes, I suppose we could consult with counsel independently to confirm whether the quitclaim deed is satisfactory, but this is a deep, an arrangement between consenting family members.
You said there's already a driveway on the other side?
Yeah.
The property as well?
So this is, I mean, your father was a farmer, so it's always just farm access to.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, this is an ancillary access to the back of the property. Yeah, yeah, I understand, I do understand, okay. As far as I can tell from reviewing the, who else is joining? This looks entirely consistent to me with the, the rules of A and Rs. Judy, do you concur with that? I mean, I've looked at.
Yes, I think it's quite a straightforward A and R.
Yeah, okay, alright, I, in these meetings, I try to consistently just play the role of a meeting moderator, so what I would like to do is hear a motion from somebody to approve this A and R plan as submitted.
I will make a motion to approve the Beans A and R.
Okay, the motion has been made, you hear a second, who was that?
Judy.
Judy seconded it, so Sarah made the motion to approve the A and R, and Judy seconded it. So we'll do our usual hybrid party roll call, um, all in favor, Sarah?
Hi.
Uh, in fact, I'm not asking, I'm just asking for your vote, so.
Yes.
Sarah's aye, Judy?
Aye.
Uh, J D?
Aye.
Grant, I'm aye. Uh, I know Laura joined, but she came too late to, um, I think she came partly, and so she'll simply. Laura, you're hearing us?
Yes, I do hear you. I got on, I, I think, like, five oh eight, I apologize, I was a little behind.
Not, not, but, but.
I think she actually should not, but can't vote, she didn't hear the full discussion.
Exactly right, does that, so she would simply not vote or report as abstaining?
I think she just can't, just.
Okay, and we have four, uh, four votes is sufficient, so the A and R is approved by those four votes. Um, what we're gonna do, we are gonna, what we wanna do, because you're here, you came to the party, we're going to sign the Mylar, which is what you need, and sign the, one of the applications. I can report that we have all the necessary copies of all the paperwork, thank you, we always get that level of compliance, which is wonderful, I can report that we did receive the application fee check, which I will turn over to the, um, treasurer collector as soon as possible opportunity. Uh, so, what we're not gonna do, we can, we can, cause we wanna move on with the agenda, we're gonna do the minimum signing, so Harland can, can take off.
And are you guys gonna?
And then we're gonna talk about the common drive, and Judy, I wanna plant in your head this question of, um, cause partly in the common drive discussion, and this relates to what we may talk about towards the end of the meeting, I know Michael Fusa has, uh, joined, the, the question of if the principal, if the planned house, or the planned residential use for parcel B, the original parcel, the, the non-flagged parcel, or let's just say the new parcel after everything's added.
Yep.
If the construction plan, which I thought I saw in the common drive permit, was placing the residential structure beyond the A R one line into the A R two line, which I believe it is, you see the dotted line? Um, so there's a question, Judy, I was going to ask you about if the residential use for this parcel is in A R two, does the frontage for A R two have to be met for the entire parcel? Which would be a huge problem, and I hope that's, so I'm, I'm conjured.
I mean, I don't.
It has come up with the bylaws, I don't think we're going to have that problem, but I want you to, Judy, would you do me a favor while we're doing a little signing here to think about that issue? So I have a Mylar here. Oh, this is a problem.
Sure.
No, we don't have a quorum of people here to sign.
I don't need that Mylar.
Alright, then.
There's, there's no rush on our, my part to get there, any.
I was hoping we would have at least three people present, um, to do the signing. Alright, so we're just gonna simply, well, I'll get the signing done, and I'll let you know as soon as everything's ready for you, or the, or Kaylee or Brett to pick up. And it will, it will not be, oh, thank you, period of time.
I can come down tomorrow morning and sign.
Okay, we'll make sure to have all of this put Sarah on.
Well.
As before, we'll have it in the, in the hour office down the hall from here, like I did before, remember? So we'll do that. Alright, so can you?
Scroll that out, the map, so we can see more of it.
Sure, usually I should be able to do it this way. Okay. The. Oh, no wonder, because I'm sh, scrolling through different.
Just so we can kind of see the whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's perfect, right there, that, that's more than enough.
Yeah, right, cause the parcel extends down into this area.
That's beautiful right there.
Okay.
Now, obviously, people can't see me, do you mind if I give a little overview of what's happening, what we'd like to happen, and where we are?
Yes, I would, and let me just, just sort of preface this where, with to do, cause we're now pivoting, we're moving on to the discussion of the common driveway, exactly right. We cannot, we have to do a formal public hearing for that.
Yep.
Cause it's a special permit issued by the planning board, and that requires posting in a newspaper record for two weeks, and so we're gonna have to schedule that, so tonight, we're just.
No, Brett?
Yes.
Brett, this common driveway is in existence.
I think you're on the wrong plan, Brett.
I think you need to move to the common driveway first. Not the common driveway plan that we're looking at, this is still the A and R plan. I'm just talking to Harland for a moment, just a little bit about the.
I mean, you could, if the common driveway plan shows all this, you can put that map up.
Yeah, that's standing on doing. So give me.
I will say, um, the only thing with the common drive, one that I sent you, I'll have to get you a little bit of an updated one. If you can see, the west property line bulges out like fifty feet more than the A and R one that we applied for, that was just a miscommunication, we did so many different layouts that the wrong one just ended up with the driveway information on it, otherwise, it's exactly the same, but I will get you guys the one with the property line tucked in a little bit more on that west side, um, before the actual, um, meeting for the permit.
Yeah, I don't think it matters much for this one, but yep, she's right.
Yeah, yeah, so, and all of the materials for the public hearing will have to be to us and able to be posted at the time we advertise the public hearing.
So, just, I mean.
Brett, I'd like to question whether, whether we in fact need to approve a common driveway, because it appears that this driveway has already crossed the lot line onto the old property, and it's been in existence probably since before the zoning was put in.
Is this the case? That's not my understanding, my understanding is this road that follows the, I guess you'd call it the western boundary, so let me. I know, this, this road is to be built.
That's, it currently stops right there.
I see, so, so there's an existing road that goes up to this existing structure, which is within the A R one boundary, so this is the A R one.
Correct.
Boundary, so there's an existing driveway, and what you wanna do is extend that drive.
That existing driveway was just put in in the last couple of months for Brad's house.
Okay, okay, so Judy, does that change what you were saying?
Okay, fine, fine, no, that's okay.
So that, that new driveway to be constructed would be, well, I mean, I guess a portion of it is a common driveway in the parcel that, um.
Oh, yeah, it's common driveway for all of this, so the reason, what I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on, the reason that the common driveway is, is very important to the whole family is most of Kaylee and Brett's lot.
Yes.
That part, what is that parcel that's C, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Most of their lot is field, that's currently used for hay, it's been used for corn, and up here is used for pasture.
Okay.
We don't want to disrupt that.
Yeah, you don't wanna run a driveway or any kind of road through that.
We, we, we farm, I mean, we have animals, and we want to continue
Yeah.
the agricultural use of that.
Which was a priority for the town anyway.
Right, right, exactly, and this driveway here, we put that in along, that's a fence line. We put it along the fence line to preserve as much of the field.
Okay.
And it continues all the way up here along a fence line.
Okay, yeah.
Out of the field, out of our usage.
Right.
On this side, there is a pond and a considerable amount of wetlands.
Hmm.
So the common drive, that's why we needed this for their lot, cause on this side it's just too wet.
Right, right.
And, um, the common drive just makes a ton of sense, so the family as a whole, all of us can maintain that field, maintain that purpose.
Right.
So.
There's no issues breaching a stone wall?
There, we don't have to cross a stone wall or anything.
For the house?
Oh, for the house, so the house, um, the stone wall was, would be in their lot, so I don't, I wouldn't think there'd be an issue.
I don't know.
But yeah, you're right, the very end of it would go across an old stone wall.
What do you mean by prob, like?
I got in trouble, I got in trouble in Williamsburg years ago building a house, cause I breached a stone wall over the driveway, and and it wasn't scenic road, but it was a road, it's wall right at the end of the street, I didn't realize I had to get approval.
Yeah.
That only applies within the town right of way.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and this dotted roadway here?
That's a tree, that's an old logging tree.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Quite often, if you go in the woods, there's stone walls dividing property.
Right, right.
Yeah, my dad's house is a stone wall.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But yeah, that's, you know, we have a, you know, we use that as a path. Um, we do a little bit of deer hunting up there, a few other things, and we use that road to access that pathway, but it's not.
All right, you can't, and, and you start a public hearing for the specific thing, we can't.
Tonight is not the public hearing.
We can't deliberate that.
All we, we.
No, I just wanted everybody to understand and know our reason for wanting that common drive.
But the point for tonight is to make sure if we see any red, you know, things that you might wanna correct before a public hearing, this is our chance to provide you with that feedback, and then you have a chance to, um, participate in uh, the scheduling of said public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the fire chief is good?
No, we have not yet, I have not yet.
I, I did talk to, um, I have an email from him, I could forward to you, I did reach out about it, and he didn't have any issues with it. Um, the grade stayed under that twelve percent, so he said it worked for him.
Okay, this was, Kaylee, that was from whom?
Um, let me check real quick.
From, from the fire chief, yeah, so.
Yeah.
From, from the, the police and fire have to provide approval and.
Not police, highway department, the public works.
Thank you, Judy.
And that driveway is our, the access is already approved by Keith, and so Keith was actually up on the site the other day.
Okay, so then it'll be straightforward, typical, once I, we announce, once we start moving.
I think however, I think they need a side lot access permit as well. They're not going through their frontage.
Oh, um, this is sideline access permit, could you say a little bit more about that? First, I've heard of that. And who?
Well, it's in the same, it's in the same part of the bylaws, just the, as the, um, com- common driveway, in fact, the the application forms are identical, you just check a different box, um, if the planning board has the ability to waive the standard requirement that that a driveway goes through the frontage on the lot. If there is, if it is technically feasible to do that, and, but if there's a good reason, like wetlands, or wanting to preserve a pasture or something, those doesn't be very good reasons. But that also requires a special permit and a public hearing, and a separate application form, and unfortunately, a separate fee. But they could be done, they could be done together.
On the application, it made it seem like it was a one or the other, I might have just been reading it wrong, but I did see that side lot access.
Well, it is one or the other, because you have to submit two applications, but if you read the back, if you read the back, it says that unfortunately, you have to, if you, if you're applying for both, you need to submit two fees.
Okay, I can get that in then.
Yeah, it's, it's, it would be all part of the same public hearing, it's essentially looking at the same map, it's, it's just unfortunately, one more step.
Wait, there's the scenario where one is approved and one is disapproved?
No, I can't see, oh, it can't be, I, I, yeah, no, I can't see that, um, okay. So one outcome of tonight is we've clarified that additional bit to get done, and there's still plenty of time to do this, to get, sort of to give you, well, I guess where we can start to talk about scheduling, cause one of the things that we've been working on, on the planning board, some bylaw revisions, where I was already anticipating scheduling a public hearing for the end of March, for a regular, end of March public, uh, regular meeting schedule. Um, and what I'd like to be able to do is not, I would like to not overload that next meeting with public hearings on bylaw revisions, and again, I guess when I'm rambling my way to is, what is your, what's the urgency around this?
I'll study it.
Yeah, like.
Try to get it done.
I mean, yeah, break around April, or you're like, bang, or two.
We, we. I mean, we, this game, we tried to do things all together a couple of years ago with these lots.
Yep.
Because both, both, you know, the two lots are gonna be required, and because we didn't do them at the same time quick enough in the game.
Yeah.
It has brought us to a, this year, doing a little creativity, which is fine.
Yeah.
So, our urgency is simply, we'd like to get it done, so any additional roadblocks.
Right.
Um, like this side lot thing, I'd like to, you know, I'll look at the bylaws and see if, you know, what.
And we'll help.
Placability of that is to this, you know, if it could be waived, you know, whatever, um, so that's, that's our urgency.
Okay, if you really wanna.
Brett, I don't think this would take more than five minutes, we've, we've discussed it, there's, there really aren't any obstacles.
Yeah.
If they, if they have the covenant, and they will need a, a maintenance covenant.
Yeah, not on the part of the planning board, by, by no stretch, no, we've just had other obstacles and everything that we should.
Sure, and so I, I hear what you're saying, Judy, and you seem to be advocating, cause we haven't gotten to the part of tonight's meeting where we talk about and make final decisions about bylaw revisions that we wanna get to annual town meeting, and annual town meeting is driving some hard deadlines for us. So my worst-case scenario, Judy's advocating that we do all of our public hearings, including yours, at our next meeting at the end of March.
I vote with Judy.
If we can do that, so I'm gonna just simply say right now, I'm, I'm with, I'm, I'm playing my chair role. My worst-case scenario is that it's either pushed for you till the end of April, that will, by the end of this meeting, we will know whether we think we can do this at the end of March, and if we can do it, if we wanna delay it a little bit, it would be no later than the end of April, but we might be able to move it to somewhere earlier in April.
I know that the building season starts earlier and earlier every year with the weather that we have now, and I know that bylaw changes, whether it would affect this or not, I don't know, but I know that they would like to get their building permit and, if possible, get going on this while the weather is good, so they can build in good weather and, and go from there. So, I mean, that's kind of the urgency.
Understood.
Could we have a, a special planning board?
Well, we can all, we can do schedule ad hoc meetings, if we can all pull this off, and I think Judy may be right, that this is not a complicated thing, the main thing is getting all the paperwork done, getting the notices, getting the abutter letters out, because we do have to send letters to all the affected abutters, so there's a certain amount of process in just making it happen. And I, and, and I just wanna be careful that we don't compromise work that the planning board's been doing for months now.
Well, we can schedule a special meeting for the next week, yes.
You mean the week after, in early April?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to.
So. How about this, give us, we're.
You guys work it out, you know what we're trying to do, and we, we respect and understand if you guys got ahead of you with the bylaws and town meeting, so.
Yeah.
If we're all on the same page, that we'd like to, you know, have some urgency without putting you guys to a, a, an unreasonable request, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, we will do this with bold, with speed, alright, no, we, they, take it seriously, and we're not just, you know, okay. Um, are there any other questions or concerns or feedback from any member of the planning board? Um, are there any other questions or concerns or feedback from any member of the planning board? To the beans regarding the common driveway, um, special permit and side lot, special permit. Request. So right now, all we have is the common driveway. So Kaylee's got the job of getting. Working with us to get the side lot, and I have to make sure I even understand what that is.
We, we do need a covenant.
Yep, we do have that and I'll get it to you guys.
The covenant has to do with the shared maintenance of the common driveway.
Yep, we have that written up already, so I could get that too as well.
All in the family, but still.
Um, no.
Might not be forever.
When you just leave it to the family, that's how it gets, when it gets confusing. Kaylee's on it.
Um, okay.
Besides, they don't have any choice. It's a requirement of the by.
Right.
Okay.
And just, is this holding up, you're getting your wild permits and your septic permits?
Yeah. Especially if there's this, you know, the line there, especially if some meteor falls out. And suddenly determines there's got to be frontage changes or something. That's going to be catastrophic, yeah, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, who do we go to to confirm that? Would that be what you guys decide on or how would we?
No, we don't, we don't. It's either Jim Hawkins. I think it's Jim Hawkins.
Okay, so I could reach out to him to just confirm that everything looks okay as well.
It's easy to find him in his office at eight o'clock in the morning, or eight thirty in the morning.
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost reluctant. At the later, at tonight's meeting. Um, this question of what rules apply. When residential uses are within the AR one boundary, within four hundred feet of the right of way. Versus what rules apply when residential uses are in the AR two zone. Has one, is one that's, has come up with another parcel down the road in, um, on Weber Road here. Where it seems as though. You take a parcel like yours and you divide it. Along that, maybe I'll, it's like the benefit.
Let's stop playing acoustic chill.
That, that this, this portion of the parcel, it's all one parcel, but the portion. Between the right of way and the AR one line, the AR one rules apply when it comes to frontage and things like that.
Grant, I don't think we're going to solve that tonight. Deborah Kearney and a half an hour in this over the weekend. And, um. It's very, very confusing and I think. We, we have to leave it to Jim Hawkins now, and if it turns out to be the wrong answer, then somehow we need to do a fix, but.
I just, I encourage everyone.
It's not something we're going to resolve here.
Yeah, when there's some of these issues that have a lot of gray area like that, you have to go back into your bylaws, into the town. A-anything to do with the town, the purpose of all these things and what the intent is and, and. Our intent is clearly to limit the impact on the property. And, you know, adding.
Rolling the frontage and doing this other thing and restricting my, uh, the rest of our family's access to the remaining property.
And that would just.
Right.
You know, that would be, that would go against what all of us want, which is, you know, preservation of what we have. And to work with it, so, you know.
I think if Jim.
Answer is.
Yeah. Go ahead, Judy.
If Jim gives you the wrong answer, I, I'm wondering if maybe this is something you could get a variance from, from the.
Yeah.
CBA, they won't like, no, maybe that's not it. I think it's. It's a problem that we created AR two, we didn't really allow. Think much about access and, um. And that's why it's so confusing and.
Yeah.
So I hope, I hope it's okay.
There's many answers to the same question sometimes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I believe we can declare victory for tonight on this agenda item. You'll still hear from me on the details of the signing when the materials for A and R are ready.
Can, you can communicate right with Kaylee.
I will do that. All right.
Yeah, so great.
All right, thank you. Coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from you via email.
I don't, hey, Brett, I do not need it.
Thank you. All right, all right. I'm really hard selling these cupcakes. I thought it's going to be a big win, but. Yeah, wow, that's fun. Okay, so, um, do we have?
A regular screen, Brad.
Can we stop sharing?
Yeah, I'm gonna stop sharing. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for that. Uh, I don't believe Sylvie. Sylvie is not here. We had an agenda item for a floodplain bylaw update. Judy, I saw there was some email between you and Sylvie. But there was an attachment, something she sent you that I, that I wasn't sent to me. So do you have by any chance? Any floodplain?
I can, I'll give you, I'll try to give you a brief update, very brief, because I. I'm not fully conversant, but she has spent time with Scott Jackson. And I think they have come to an agreement that the. The conservation commission can advise the floodplain administrator. Um, if there are clear principles upon which they do that. And the next step she has is. To develop those clear principles. Um, she sent today a, excuse me. A document from FEMA. That was about application of flood insurance, of the flood insurance program to agricultural structures. And it gave a lot of regulations by type of structure, which was very helpful. It also had one sentence in it that said that. Many states have exempted agriculture from, from their zoning requirements, but. In order to be eligible for the floodplain and flood insurance, you had to obey the federal requirements. So I think that's, that to some extent solves the. One, one state law saying one thing and one state law saying another. Um, for JD and Laura, the problem we've had with the floodplain bylaw is that it's a zoning bylaw. But. This, the state exempts agriculture for most zoning. So it's been kind of a dilemma about how you apply, to what extent you could apply the floodplain bylaw to farms. And most of the area in our, huge portion of the area in our floodplain is farming area, so. Um, that's where we've been hung up. So I think if we can tell townspeople, we need to look to the federal regulations. In addition to the zoning regulation that clarifies that a good bit. So I felt good about that.
I have a quick question about that. What do we determine a farm? Is it the use of it being used? Is it income being derived from the land for farming? Is it the landowner leasing it to someone else to farm on it? Is it a hobby farmer?
It doesn't matter. It's, it's the usage of a farm.
Principal use.
Principal use.
Principal use, yeah.
Laura has horses and chickens to shoot farm under this.
On her residence?
Yeah.
I think there is.
That's her residential.
Natural.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, if you have a little.
Yeah, I think technically it might, it might have to be more than five acres in farming or something, but. Um.
Sarah, do you know?
No. But, but.
No, chickens on your home lot wouldn't count.
Yeah, I mean, the main use of that property, I mean, depending on the size of it, is most likely. The majority of it is not the chicken coop and is the house.
For what it's worth, I don't consider myself a farm.
All right, that is, that's our, that's our floodplain bylaw update for tonight.
The other thing that for Laura and JD is that. We have to pass this floodplain bylaw to be eligible for FEMA disaster insurance for the town as well, or disaster help. There aren't very many people who have flood insurance, federal flood insurance. There are some. But. But I think everybody cares about FEMA. So it's, it's a necessary obligation to get this passed. But. So. So Sylvie, I chatted with her briefly today. She said, oh, I'm hoping we can get it to town meeting. And I said, no. There just certainly isn't time for that. Uh, she's got to develop the principles. We have to educate people. We have to. All right. But anyway, I feel better about it than I have in a long time.
Good, good. And what was your last under? They kept moving the deadline for when this bylaw had to be passed by a town.
The only definitive di- deadline that I know at this point is that. If we get a new FEMA map, it has to be passed within six months of that being published. But. Since they've been, last I knew that they were hoping to get one out in twenty twenty five, but. They hope to get one out in twenty twenty two and. I wouldn't hold my breath.
All right, and it was still the.
But it would be nice to have, you know, it would be good to get it done.
Seems like I recall the current FEMA map around circa seventy nine. Ninety seven, yeah, yeah, it's an old, old map. Okay. All right, um, just before we move to the next agenda item. It seemed an appropriate time to officially welcome Laura Ross to the planning board. Uh, Laura, you were just sworn yesterday, the day before, is that correct?
She's muted.
Yes, yesterday, uh, uh, no, actually, I'm sorry. It was Monday I went.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, a couple days ago.
Did you get your official copy of the zoning bylaws, I hope?
Um, I think I actually did not get them, but electronic really works better for me anyways, so that's okay.
All right, fair enough. Very good. All right, so let's, um, let's move on. To the discussion of zoning bylaws and bylaw changes for annual town meeting. Um. Can someone just remind me, I was at last. At our last planning board meeting, did we defer or even or, or vote on? The removal of the growth control bylaw? I remember whether we already approved that or we kind of. Put th- those decisions, that decision off to this meeting. Does anyone happen to remember?
I think we put it off, but I'm not sure.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, go ahead, minutes. Well, we don't have minutes, so it's right now going on our memories. Unless Mary happens to quickly be able to.
No, Mary can't, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good. So, um, we're going to just assume for tonight that we didn't have a vote on this. Um. What I'd like to do is, because I think this is easy. It's the easier of the ones, just to remind everybody, we're gearing up to schedule a public hearing on. Bylaw changes that we want to get in front of annual town meeting. I'll remind people that already we've approved the new zoning map. That changes the act of protection overlay district boundaries. And so we voted, we voted on that and we voted and approved corresponding changes to the bylaw language. So we're going to, in our, and remind me, Judy, we, we can do multiple public hearings. On the same night, of course, but each bylaw change gets its own public hearing, correct?
No, we can, that's a topic for a public hearing.
So we could put all of the changes in one public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I wasn't sure of that detail. So we already are gearing up to do, we haven't set a time. I'm sort of notionally thinking that. End of March, our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting date would be used for the public hearing. I mean, we haven't discussed it, we haven't agreed on that, but that would be my hope. And I want to make sure before tonight is over, we've had that discussion agreed on, that it would seem like we would have enough fun. Get all of our ducks in order for a public hearing at the end of March on the bylaw changes. Um. So the act of protection bylaw and zoning map would be in that public hearing and then. Potentially, if we vote to approve eliminating the growth control bylaw, which is. Article eight in its entirety. Subsections one seventy one dash thirty eight through one seventy one dash forty three. And if you want to, always hit the paper.
Okay.
Um, so I think we discussed that. I think there was a general sentiment that, um. It's well motivated based on law. It's the very last article, article eight, the growth control bylaw. That whole section. Um, in its entirety would be, would be stricken because it's not consistent with. Um, legal opinions, the Mass- Massachusetts constitution, we'll never hit it. And we, yeah, and there's no justification for it. That's right. So what I'd like to do, just to make this formal procedure, I'd like to hear a motion. To strike article eight from the zoning bylaws in its entirety. Then, if that motion is made and seconded, we can have a discussion, see if there are any questions, concerns, then we can have a vote.
I make a motion to strike article eight from the growth, growth control bylaw from.
Okay, what, what, the motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Sarah has seconded it. Motion has been made and seconded.
I'm sorry, but I, could you please? Article eight, article eight is called what?
The growth control bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we are voting, we're discussing a motion to strike it in its entirety.
It's one seventy one dash thirty eight through one seventy one dash forty three in its entirety, yes.
I'm, I have every reason to believe that's a good idea, so I'm in favor of it. And I think that it would be easy to explain at town meeting. Anyone who believes that. Less regulation is better would be in favor of it. The only potential concerns that I can see are people who. Like the idea of the growth control bylaw.
As a member of a finance committee.
Yeah.
We are pro growth because it adds new dollars to the tax base, so. Um, speaking as an individual member of the finance committee.
Yeah, and not representing.
Not representing the finance committee, just an individual member of it.
Yes.
All for limiting this.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, um, to roll call Sarah Cooper.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
JD?
Yes.
Uh, Laura can vote?
I vote yes.
Uh, can, can Laura vote? Can Laura vote? I mean, we deliberated. Yes, you're good. Okay, all right. Even though we've had discussions prior to this one.
She was there. She was there for the discussion.
All right, we can run the camera and video on the audio with her. Mac doesn't work, right?
Yeah, no, those Apple products just can't. Uh, so Laura, can you, uh, vote unmute then?
I, I vote yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And I vote yes. So the motion passes unanimously there, strike article eight growth control. Next, I'm going to share some screen sharing. Judy has done a marvelous job of, uh. Drafting. She has screen.
These are the members of the public or of her agendas, if they're just curious.
Um, well, we have at least one person who just enjoys attending these meetings. Even though he or she doesn't get cupcakes. And another person who is going to, will. Uh, be here for the additional items not anticipated.
Sure.
Okay, so again, we're going to do it the way I propose where I'd like to. Um, I'd like to hear a motion, a second, then we have discussion and a vote. And then the usual process is whoever makes the motion. A future reference, according to Robert's rules, speaks to the motion first after it's made and seconded. A future reference, according to Robert's rules, speaks to the motion first after it's made and seconded. So Judy might consider making a motion on this one.
Okay, I, should I discuss the changes first?
What you should do, I think, my recommendation, Judy, is you make the motion. We get it seconded, and then there's discussion, and then you speak to anything you want to speak to, including changes that have been made.
Okay. Well, I move to accept. The proposed new community housing bylaw is depicted in the draft being shown.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second?
I seconded.
JD has seconded the motion, the motion's been made and seconded, Judy, why don't you uh? Tell us what changes have been made since we've last seen this and why they've been made.
Okay, um, they're in yellow. Uh, they were, came out of revisions that. Megan Rhodes, Megan. Rhodes suggested some of them. And also some that I discovered. In reviewing the state. Bylaws about special permits. I had had originally that the units have permanent affordability requirements. And Megan changed it to long term evidently. To be eligible for the housing inventory, it doesn't have to be permanent, which I hadn't realized, so. Um, she wanted to take out the requirement that it be recorded with the registry of deeds. And I highlighted that because it probably should be discussed. I had originally had that in there. Because. I felt it was, well, one, I thought it was necessary. Um, and two, I think it's important for enforcement as as we discussed at some length last time. So I left that in, and I I do think it's a good idea.
Judy was. This whole answer, she gets, she gets the floor, yeah.
Okay, um, I had put in. Something about accessory apartments being included. And Megan was uncomfortable with that because she thought. It really didn't fit. With the. The context, because it was a little out of place. So I changed, I took that out and. The the idea is that the relaxing the dimensional requirements. Would permit larger accessory permits than. Than the regular bylaws would. I'm sorry, I don't know why I can't talk tonight. So I changed. So I added. Occupant limit requirements. In section B is because those wouldn't necessarily have been covered by the dimensional and density requirements. And then when I. Was reading. After this discussion with. With Deborah Carney about special permits. I I was reading the bylaw and the state law. And it says that, yes, indeed, towns can relax bylaw requirements. And this. For properties under special permit. But. You have to, you have to identify caps on the number of units. And any changes in occupancy. Now, we had had. A cap on the number of units as part of this. But we didn't have one on the number of occupants, and so I. I added that the occupant limits may not exceed five inhabitants. I I think that's all, Grant, is that it?
Uh, let's just see, and right now, the existing accessory apartment limits are two people.
Yeah. It didn't see, it didn't, I thought it was kind of. Opposite of the intent of the changes to allow a bigger apartment and then not allow more people to live there. So. So those are the changes and the ones you haven't seen. Just a reminder that this is intended to. Allow all of the same things that somebody could do with a forty B. Under the same conditions. Uh, but by give, but also giving the town more control via special permit and. Side plan review, which they wouldn't have, it, which the town wouldn't have with a forty B. So there's no greater. Authority given to anybody, but the town has more control. What the builder gets is less paperwork, less hassle, I put hassle. Burden of forty B application is very complicated. And takes some time. So for a small project, this would be much easier. But it would give the town more control.
You yield the floor, Judy? Okay. Um, questions?
Yeah, Judy. Megan Rhodes is of the fur cry, correct, just so people listening, and. Did for part A, we said recorded with registry of deeds. Would she have a different opinion because she might think the attorney general might strike it?
No, no, um, I think it. I think it just came part and parcel with taking out the permanent affordability. With the permanent one, it does. Specifically have to be recorded, um, I don't think there's a problem with this.
Okay, um, the other thing about the occupant limit that concerns me. Two parts, one, as a builder, there's nothing in my code about. How many occupants I can have in residence or dwelling unit, we talk about dwelling units.
Yeah.
And what drives the dwelling units is the size of the septic system, that's what it says how many we can have per, not how many. We can have three bedrooms, we can have nine people in the bedrooms, but it goes by how many bedrooms we have.
Okay.
And I'm concerned about. We'd say we have.
Permit would would limit the occupants.
I'm just saying, we have a young family, they have two children, they're trying for a third, they end up with twins, and they're now homeless. That's what I'm concerned about. I think maybe just limit the number of bedrooms.
I, we don't have, we don't have that. Option, if I. I think it says that they have to put a cap on the.
You could do number of non-related people in there, I think.
That's really an interesting twist I hadn't thought about, but this was driven, Judy, because. Certainly, we want to achieve the effect of, right now. Without this, if you want to build an accessory apartment in Waverly, according to current bylaws, there can be no more. As written, you know, not even considering what you just described is. That the occupant limit is two. Which I guess means two who are not going to have any children. Because the same, what you, the same scenario you just described would apply today, right? Somebody's, a couple gets into an accessory apartment, and they have a child, and now they have to leave the accessory apartment.
Carefully left this, left the enforcement of this. I don't know how it's enforced. But I do know we have to, the, I think the attorney general would reject it if we didn't. Have a cap on the number.
I, so we can't limit the number of bedrooms, we can't say it's an accessory, clearly it's not. We can't limit it to two bedrooms because it's an accessory use.
Well, it'd still be stuck with the two. The bylaw announces two people.
Yeah.
So unless you specifically made a way to waive that.
Yeah, so. We have a problem, an existing problem potentially in our bylaws that we're not addressing here, just to how we're dealing with. Conforming accessory apartments. Here, we're trying to. Allow more, develop more housing units to be built and certain. Rules in the bylaws to be waived if this twenty five percent long term affordability. Is met, met, which I guess for an accessory apartment means if somebody wanted to build an accessory dwelling unit. And they said that. I assume, Judy, what that would mean is the entire accessory dwelling unit would be have to, would have to have a long term affordability. Um, requirement. Not just one person, you know, it would have to apply to the entire dwelling unit.
Well, it would have to apply to the to the apartment.
Yes, what what I'm saying is that if I wanted to build an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, and I needed, I couldn't do it unless certain. Certain dimensional requirements and occupants limits were waived. With, if this were approved in town. I could do that only if I declared that the only people who could live in that accessory dwelling unit that I was building. Would meet these um. S H I requirements. Right, you could not be a market rate owner of occupant. Do I, is that an accurate statement, Judy?
Yes.
Does this, you're a representative of our housing committee?
I am the representative for housing.
Does this have any to the, I saw the conceptual plans with Dumeo property, does this? Would this apply to that property?
They don't think so at this point.
They don't think so.
Okay, but right now, the Dumeo.
They can't build, they can't build more than four units on the Dumeo property without this bylaw. Without going through a forty B.
Oh, yeah, that's true. That's, that's, that's true.
Like three buildings, surely there's.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, but that was just a conceptual, I reiterated that that was spitballing and not really a proposal. Um, so I, I I think what's happening is that. What you're saying, JD, about occupant limits. Versus bedroom limits makes a lot of sense, but this is not the place where we can fix that problem.
Okay.
If if we really shouldn't be. Trying to limit the size of. The occupancy of accessory dwelling units. Um, by number of occupants for the reason that you'd say, but rather what we do square footage. We could consider in the future modifying it to. Uh, be restrictions based on size and number of bedrooms. And modify the, 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 the non-affordable housing version of accessory dwelling unit. To be about size and number of bedrooms and not size and number of occupants as it currently is.
Right.
Uh, but. That's not what we're dealing with.
At that point, you can take this out too. And then you can.
Okay. So I think what we're acknowledging, if we go forward with this, it's written. At this time, that we're putting an occupant limit of five. Um, but we're. Acknowledging that enforcement of that is. Not really. Addressed, and there would be undesirable scenarios if it were. A potentially undesirable scenarios if it were carefully enforced. So that if somebody, a couple with two kids or, yeah, had kids, suddenly. They have to leave their dwelling.
This is made for a college town where. They're trying to put eight students, that's too bad apart.
But I don't think, and I suspect, Judy, that. Yeah, there's absurd things, if they hadn't been puppets, right? You know, I don't think we're going to start raising the occupant limit in this particular draft beyond five. I think it's a, it's an expression of. Intent or desire. Is that reasonable, Judy? Um, other.
Yeah, I mean, but it's, it's, if it passes, it's a limit.
Yes, but still, the question would be, I mean, I suppose. How is that, so if I build. If I build an accessory dwelling unit. And I declare that it's uh. That that will only be rented to, or leased to people meeting the um. The affordable housing requirements. Uh, and then the Z B A waves all the various things so that I can do this. And now I don't know, the building inspector is not involved in occupancy, right? You know, renting, he's out of the loop here, so it's really just. I suppose it would be. It would be the way we do things in here in Waverly, somebody complained.
It would be a condition of the special permit. And then if. Over time. Somebody exceeded it, then somebody would have to complain. But. I don't know. I mean, if you think about it, if you've got. Six people in a tiny apartment. They're gonna want to get out if they can to do so, um, I. I think that by, I. I wouldn't worry, I don't think that the enforcement issue is. As bad a problem as we're making it. Um. I I get, I would bet that it wouldn't be enforced, but. I don't know. But I do know that, I mean, we could take the whole thing out, but then. Then you'd still be limited to the two. To the two inhabitants.
Oh, well, but no, you still want in part B to leave the new, the inserted. Occupant limit is within, within the realm of what could be.
And I think we then have to have the cap, so, um, I think we just. We're doing the best we can, what we have to play with.
And we waive the occupant limit.
Um, well, no, so what this would say is that. Right now, the occupant limit is two.
Good.
If somebody came along and built one of these and made it, set it up for affordable housing, then they could. Legally allow as many as five people to occupy it, and and if six or more were in there. They might be able to get away with that until somebody noticed and complained. And then that would lead to some adjudication involving the building inspector. And. And there, and then it's really the building inspector's decision.
This is a real concern, how we're forward with the number of people entering our country, asylum or refugees. Living in a place that live with large extended families, I mean, this, this could very well happen. And it would disprove against those people.
This only applies to accessory apartments, okay?
Yeah.
It's not anything else.
Yes, this is only, this is the only, part E is only in there because of the accessory dwelling unit piece. And I mean, ultimately, we're, you might say anytime we're building anything, there's still capacity.
Okay.
Um, all right, I mean, I admit that I'm, I'm a little bemused by this, but I'm not sure that this sinks it in my mind. Um, I've had other accessory dwelling units, but we're really leaving those now. Um, Judy, I do have a question, I do want to make sure I give some time to Sarah if she has questions, or Laura. But I'll just insert one here in part A, is um. Is long term in this context. Adequately defined, is it clear to just use it that way, do you have to add a definition? I'm often concerned when we add terminology to bylaws that seem either not defined in our bylaws, so that's my finding.
I think you look to the rest of it, the rest of the statement where you're. You're defining the requirements, you look to the requirements of the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing in livable communities. So whatever they determine.
So they have documents that use long term affordability as a term, so somebody could find what that, what those requirements are, okay?
Somebody could find the requirements. Of. Their requirements and and, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, have you? So where did the term?
You're the one on the housing committee, Grant, not me.
Yeah, I know, um, well, of course, again, this is new word.
This was, this was, this was Megan's wording.
Okay. And so. I'll assume at this point that it's, it's. You know, a term that would be understood if somebody had to say, what are those requirements that they could be? Looked up and it wouldn't be ambiguous, that was really just the thrust of my question.
Yep.
And point regarding recorded with the registry of deeds means. And point regarding recorded with the registry of deeds means, it just means that those. Um, that restriction is publicly available. And versus some other entity unnamed would have to keep track. Uh, that these requirements have been placed, that correct?
Correct, and, and also it, it enforced, it effectively means that any owner of the property has to. Should theoretically have seen this because it's, it's unadeed, so they have to know it's there.
Yeah.
Or they can certainly be held accountable for knowing it's there.
Sarah, comments, questions?
You all had very good comments and questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Laura, comments, questions?
I, I thought, um, there was good valuable discussion, but I don't think that I have anything to add.
Okay. And I think, um. I think there's still some things about this that I wanna understand better, but I don't feel at this time. I don't see anything personally here that would lead me to feel that we cannot or should not take this to a public hearing. I would like to. Kind of state, like, I'd like to make as much of an effort as we can and use all available. Um, advertising resources. To make people in town aware of a public hearing where this is going to come up. I'd like, I would feel much more comfortable taking something like this before annual town meeting. If there was some good engagement at a public hearing. Um, but still, I feel this ought to go to a public hearing, so I would be. Inclined to support it to the next step. So we've had our, the motion was made, the motion was seconded, we've had our discussion. Um, last call for any discussion before we vote on the motion. Uh, Mary, you wanna remind us what the motion is that we're about to vote on? Mary there? Maybe, um, or Judy, you'll simply re- repeat the motion for the record.
I move that we. Approve the proposed community housing bylaw as outlined in this document.
Alright, um. So we're going to do a roll call vote.
And, and I guess we should include the. This section for the table of use.
Yes, including the section. The modifications to the table of use. Which means that it's, this community housing use is allowed by special permit and with site plan review. In AR one, AR two, and commercial, and not in commercial industrial or industrial. Okay, very good, alright, Sarah gets first vote.
Yes.
Judy, second vote.
Yes.
JD?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alright, and I vote yes, so the motion passes unanimously. Um, I do have a, just a question Judy. I, I, do you think there's any tricks or? Um, potential pitches around inserting this with a new number? And renumbering all the subsequent paragraphs in the zoning bylaw? Could we end up actually having to get the entire? All the renumbered parts of the bylaw reviewed and approved by the attorney general if we do something?
Lynn, Lynn told me once that, uh, when she was town clerk, that. Numbering is something that we can change without going to the A G.
Yay, okay, thank you, that was like a little procedural thing that I was worried about. Okay, so what we wanna do next, having, so now we've approved. Um, the aquifer protection. Changes the zoning map, removing the growth control bylaw. And this new community housing bylaw, was there anything else? That I might have somehow forgotten that needs to go before a public hearing so we can get it to this year's annual town meeting? Think we're good, right? So how do people feel about scheduling? So let's talk about scheduling that public, so a couple of things. We next need to take everything. The, the next step is to have all of these proposed changes. What we voted on tonight, and the, and the aquifer stuff, yeah, all reviewed by town council, yeah. So I will take the action. Keeping you in the loop to request that town council review. That should be done, I'm told I send this over to Brian. Well, or who's ever going to be in Brian's shoes.
They have an interim.
They, have they got an interim already?
So she was here yesterday.
Oh wow, yay, okay, um, anyway, we're going to get this. Pass town council, town council will let us know if there are any concerns. Um, we can do that while we are in the process of scheduling and doing all the notice for the public hearing. But we, we should have feedback, should take about two to three weeks tops to get, what I'm told. Get a review from, by legal counsel. So I'll take that action to compile all of this. In a package that can be sent to town council, Judy, I'll ask that when I do that, I'll run it by you in case I. Missed something or having never done this before, you'll keep me on the stream and arrow like you always do?
I'll do my best.
Okay, thank you, that's all we can ever ask. Um. So how do people feel about?
One comment, Grant, um, town council will get it back. On the deadline you specify and no sooner.
Oh, is that?
If you're lucky.
Okay. Alright, well, it's.
So I would specify like a Friday before the. Hearing or something, so we have time to adjust it.
So you have to make a. Any adjustments they made?
If, yes, if we, we can at a public hearing discuss and make changes.
Yeah.
At the public hearing, my understanding is that when we notice the public hearing. All the materials for the public hearing must already, must be available by the time the notice is posted. Assume that means that you're not allowed to change it, except at the actual hearing. So we're talking notionally about Wednesday, the twenty seventh of March. Our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting date will be this public hearing. For all of these bylaw changes. Okay, and everyone, is that good with everyone? And Mary, I know that you've been working on, um. Public hearing for the Z B A. That I think was around the thirteenth on the fourteenth, do you have the? Time in your calendar that help if, it looks like if we did this on the twenty seventh of March. We would have to, so they do some, it's like. We have to at least have the public, the first public notice in a newspaper of record. Around the, what, eleventh or twelfth? Twelfth, twelfth, it had to be fourteen days in advance. Not counting, so that would be zero, one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah, I can work. We, we're a pretty good team, she and I on this.
Okay, to make these, but I just wanna make sure that Mary, you have the, um. You know, you have the cycles to. Work with Judy on that so that we can make the deadlines for a public hearing by the, to be held on the twenty seventh of March. You are muted, Mary. You are still muted, Mary.
And you're still sharing.
Am I socializing? Okay.
Yes, your answer, your answer is yes, uh, if it's gonna be on the twenty seventh, there is still room to get that going.
Awesome.
If that was your question to, to us.
Yes. Yes, very good, alright, I want, I mean, we have to get stuff together fairly quickly, but we do that, alright.
I'm not able to attend, but if you have a quorum, that's, but I won't be able to attend probably until. Anything until. A couple of weeks after that.
So I think, okay, so JD's confirmed, Judy's confirmed, I'm confirmed, and I assume Laura, you'd be confirmed for the hearing on the twenty seventh? Okay.
Yeah, yes, I can make it on the twenty seventh.
Okay, very good. Any other details about that public hearing Judy that we need to discuss tonight? Got a date, that's plenty of time for getting things in order for annual town meeting.
Yeah.
Are we gonna try to sweep the beans in that day?
Well, now, that's the next thing that I wanted to.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt, but I had to run out for a couple of minutes unavoidably. And I missed what probably was the vote on the.
Unanimous approval.
Okay.
Unanimous approval.
Unanimous approval for, so the motion originally made by Judy, seconded by JD, he's seconded, right?
I seconded, yeah.
Right, and so it was approved, yeah, so, very good.
We added, Mary, we added the. Uh, inclusion of the table of use section into the motion. So it's approval of the bylaw in the insertion in the table of use.
Include.
Excuse me, Grant.
Include the bylaw in the table of use, is what you're.
And the table of use.
And.
And the addition to the table of use.
Alright. So I think we're done with that agenda item. Are there any, there's no other zoning bylaw changes that anyone wants to talk about? And after, after we get through all of this, there will. When we get maybe even the potential to afford town meeting, there are other things that have come up. Whether it's about accessory dwelling units or about aquifer protection or solar that we. Need to consider for a future town meeting, we'll get started on that as soon as we, the dust settles up, this coming town meeting. We are not, we have no new minutes.
JD asked about the beans hearing and.
Yes, and so the beans hearing, do we?
There is one wrinkle there, um, a special permit requires a super, requires a two-thirds. Approval, which means you need four votes. So a quorum isn't enough. Um, if, if Eric knows she can't come, then everybody else really has to be there.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll be there.
Um. And just so we know, Sarah, what's your? When is your availability window reopened, meaning you could come to these meetings?
I, uh, from the March twentieth to, I am very much hoping. Two weeks after that, and, uh, that I will start being able to be semi-coherent.
Okay.
Surgery, and once I'm, I don't wanna be on a meeting if I'm on, if I'm on narcotics, so.
Yeah, so to Judy's point before, worst case scenario.
I'm hoping April.
Meeting the first week.
Yeah, what we would end up doing is, especially if it all gets scheduled and it's moving. Then we would convene the public hearing and then, um, continue it to another date.
Continue it.
And, and we would not have to do more advertising or anything like that.
That's fair to them.
I'm expecting second or third week in April, I'll be coherent.
Okay, alright, well. Obviously, your health is the most important thing. Um, so I think we can do this, and with, with four votes, it doesn't seem like. There's any obvious reason why this could work, now the question is. Well, I mean. It does not seem like a public hearing on the common driveway and the side lot. Is all that complicated? And it seems like it could be.
I don't think you'll get anybody there who wasn't at our discussion today.
Yeah, right, I mean, there's no.
I would schedule it before the other, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it'd be over in five minutes.
Okay. Well, that would certainly make them happy, and I would, I'd be happy to just not have that hanging over its head.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um, but it does create this additional burden of more paperwork, right? Because again, there are additional letter letters, other notices, so it's, no, well, they have to pay for it, yeah, but we have.
No, they don't. We never, we never included. Applicants paying on, on special permits, because we have so few, we didn't think of it.
Alright, so we eat the cost of that. Which will be, but I mean, so far we haven't spent any of our budget, so, um. But that's still not the issue, I'm just worried about the labor on the volunteer and staff and, and Mary. And that now that's yet another set of more invoicing and things dealing.
I've never done that before, but I'll pull my weight if I need to do something, so I'm sure Laura will too.
Judy, how are you feeling, I mean, I'm totally happy to help out, but it puts us into a bit of a crunch. Over the next week or so to get all of this stuff together, so it could move along.
Well, there's a couple of weeks for the hearing, for the ad, I mean, I don't think.
Yeah, it would be the eleventh or twelfth.
Pretend it, so.
Yeah.
Drafting the ad for the special permit is, permits is fairly straightforward, the one for the zoning stuff is a little more complicated.
I would like to apprentice to know how to do this with Judy to her, making the board.
Yeah.
Would you know how to do this, and I don't know how to do it, so.
That would be, that would be ideal.
Yeah.
That would be ideal. Okay, so we're going to commit to trying to pull all of this off. Uh, I mean, these two public hearings on March twenty seventh. Okay, alright, people comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So JD stepped up and you're doing this, I know you're doing this during finance committee season too. Be careful what you.
I was begging to do that.
Okay, alright, alright. Okay, now I've, you know, I have an engineering background, and I always learned to like, set very conservative deadlines. And I would tend to push this out two weeks into April, but, um. If we wanna take a, take a shot at this, the worst thing is we miss a deadline. End up having to do it in April, but let's try it, okay, if you're all willing, try to do it end of March. Um, okay, so we're now, we're not doing any approval of minutes. Um, we're into the additional items, not an anticipated period. There are a couple of things that I want, well, there's one thing, I'm gonna, we're gonna have, I know Mike. Yusa has been hanging out here, so we're gonna get to him. Um, I just wanna remind people, I think I circulated this information. But particularly for you JD, Laura. Um, there is, uh, I think I, there is a, I'm just trying to find my.
Your training.
My email, this, uh, conference. So in general, we can pay training costs out of the planning budget. There is a upcoming, didn't I circulate this?
Yeah, I got it something.
To, uh, it's at Worcester in, um, O Cross.
Yeah.
And it's on a Saturday, and I'm planning on going, it's like an all-day thing. With a bunch of different workshops covering a whole bunch of. Worthwhile subject matter. Worthwhile subject matter, and if you can get free on a Saturday.
Saturdays are, weekends are tough, being a father of a young family, in a business owner, it's tough, but. I will do my best right now.
But we can carpool, I'll have leftover cupcakes.
They have other classes that are shorter, but.
Yeah, they're all good. So, just in general, I'm gonna try to keep, when I see these training things coming up. I'll alert you guys to it, and you can register and, okay, get reimbursed for the training.
Okay.
But if, if you can go, or go together, we should do that. Okay. So what I wanna. Yeah, yeah, we're in the additional items now, Mike, Yusa's here, Mike, you wanna? Go live on video and audio, and you've, you've, uh, suffered this long. So.
Oh, I spend lots of times in long meetings, so this is no, this is actually not so bad.
Okay. Well, if you've been here, you would have gotten cupcakes. Alright, so, what I wanna try to do here is bring up this. The assessor's map, so we can look at the parcel in question. And I gather, Judy, you've been, you've had some conversations with the ZBA. Alright, yeah, I'm getting, let me share my screen. On here, so I'm sharing the online assessor's map. If you don't actually see that. Zoom in. On Weber Road on, it's parcel five. So. So. Mr. Yusa, you are, correct me if I'm wrong, you are considering purchasing. Parcel five, is that correct, or you have purchased parcel five?
So I have an accepted offer on parcel five.
I see, so. So you're, I'm sorry, you're the seller?
No, I'm, I would be the buyer.
You're, yes, so you have made an offer. Uh, that, on parcel five, that's been accepted by the seller. And.
Correct.
You're. You're, you would like to build a single-family home on this lot. Uh, it is. A building lot in the sense that it has the required frontage. It has the required. But, well, it has, the, it meets the dimensional requirements, though it has this. Common driveway, is this? Or a, there is a. Well, it's a sh- it, it's effectively a shared driveway, is that, um?
There's a special permit that has been approved for that, to have be. A shared driveway for both, uh, lots four and five is pictured there.
Right. And the issue is that because of the presence of this common driveway. It reduces the area of the parcel available for building. And it puts the, now you'll notice the western boundary. Five hundred and seventy feet, if I can do this right, so what's coming up here is this. What Mr. Buser would like to do. Is measure length. So if I do this right. Do this, so, this is approximately, this is just an approximation. So this is approximately where the AR one, AR two boundary falls in parcel five.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and I believe that. What Mr. Buser wants to do, or because of the layout of the land relative to this common driveway. The desired placement of the single-family home would be beyond the AR. One boundary into AR two. Fair statement?
Uh, w- w- we need a much more detailed site survey to make that final site plan determination. But in all likelihood, yes.
I, I have a question, is that, at the end of the existing driveway, is that the house that's shown there with the sixty-one, six, and the forty, and the twelve? Is that the house that's existing?
No, this is the end of the driveway, this is where my little red.
So is there a house there right now?
No, there's a house over here.
Oh, the house is way, oh, I couldn't see that, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the, the driveway, the common driveway ends were that. Ends were the, the sort of, um, right-of-way ends there. There is a continuation of a paved driveway that goes up to the sort of backside of that house. But that is, that's not considered part of the common driveway, or I think covered under the special permit.
Okay. And there's no, uh, separation distances for water wells or septic systems where you wanna put your house?
So, the, the primary consideration here is that this is quite a steep slope. And really, it is only once you get south, the sort of switchback in the driveway that cuts across. That lot five, uh, actually, the, the lower one branch.
Down here.
Um, uh, yeah, so, yeah, so this is, it's quite steep below that. You wouldn't be able to build a house in between Weber Road and the lower part of the driveway. Because of the cut in the hill, there's such steep grating there, that there really isn't the. Possibility of actually putting a whole house, septic and well, within the AR one setback. I think that in all likelihood, that the site plan will be in, will, will have some portion of it in AR one. But will cross the boundary into AR two. Does that make sense?
Where did it park?
Uh, we haven't parked it yet.
Well, what brought us here is that. It appears based on a reading of the bylaws, and having spoken to Jim Hawkins, he concurs with this reading. That when the principal, the residential structure is placed. Fully within the AR two zone of that parcel. The, the dimensional requirements of AR two must apply in full. To the portion of the parcel that lies within AR two.
And they're different.
Well, you'll notice that this entire parcel is approximately three acres. Right, but again, sort of imagine drawing the first two thirds of it roughly, I'm just doing a rough approximation. Lie within the AR one zone. The rest of that parcel is in AR two.
Yeah.
The dimensional requirements, just for minimum lot size up there. Lots without public water in AR two. Hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Three acres.
Three acres, which is basically the size of the entire lot, but the way our bylaws are written. The portion of that lot that falls within AR one is excluded from that calculation. And so the, we currently believe. And this is, does not seem to be a desired outcome of the creation of the AR one, AR two districts. But in this particular scenario, it seems to mean that the only way. Mr. Buser could build his single-family home on that parcel. And played it within the AR two zone is to obtain a variance from the ZBA. Because he would not conform to the minimum lot size. Even though the lot in its entirety. Is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and has the desired, the, 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 the necessary frontage.
So Mr. Bean will have the same issue.
Well, we don't know, he's got seven acres, I, I didn't really wanna go there, right? It looked to me that if he's got seven acres, of which the front part is in that flagpole area. He might have more than a hundred and twenty thousand square feet in that lot beyond the AR one layer. Boundary, so he's probably okay, but Mike here is in a.
So the house has to be touching the AR one area?
That, that is part of my question, uh, I would, I would actually, I don't know that the interpretation that. At least from the conversations that I've been a part of for the interpretation of the bylaws. Were that you had to have a hundred and twenty thousand square feet in AR two, I think it's that you had to have it in total. But the problem is, is that you have to have three hundred feet of frontage. And so, this lot is clearly lacks three hundred feet in frontage. It, it doesn't likely lack three hundred feet in its maximal width. Because of that sort of like elbow portion at the top, but I know that doesn't really matter. Um, but, but yeah, it seems like we're running into some.
Right.
Some challenges here.
Could I, Judy, since you were. Present, if not a player in the creation of AR one and AR two. Could you say a little bit about what was the planning board's intent at the time that AR two was created? Um, like, what was the, wha- wha- what would you say is the policy objective of, of creating AR two? And setting it four hundred feet back from the right of way?
We created AR two as a way to enable cluster. So, cluster housing. Um. In a town with no sewers. You. There's a, a, it's very difficult to reduce the size of a lot. Enough to, um, cluster. So the idea was to expand. To create a zoning area with expanded acreage. And then. Give people the incentive to build together in clusters. Um. And, and preserve open space, this, at the time, this was in two thousand and ten. People were extremely worried about. Too much development, taking agricultural and open space land, so this was a way to. Do smart, what they call smart growth, by putting houses closer together. Um, consolidating driveways and roads as much as possible, reducing sprawl. And. It was amazingly easy to get through town meeting, we thought we'd have some objections, but the idea of preserving open space. If you read the cluster housing bylaw, I mean, it, it goes on and on and on about open space and.
Right.
Preserving, and, um. As I said earlier, um, we didn't think through this kind of issue. And we really didn't do a very good job of designing access.
Yeah, there's.
And it just literally never occurred to anybody.
Yeah, yeah, so we've.
And, and including, including FERCAG, you know, we, we used. We had lots of support from FERCAG and other planners, and. So I think it's, it's a. I would say it's a definitely a less than perfect job, but it is what it is.
Yeah, the, um, I'm trying to find, I thought I had my fingertips on it. Where is that, where is that provision? That speaks to an additional thirty feet beyond the, the, the boundary. That the principal use extends.
It talks about split boundaries and.
Let me just ask.
And, and so. The thirty foot, the thirty foot extension is one seventy-one dash five E.
Okay, thank you, like, I should, thank you, Mike, it's embarrassing that I don't have this memorized, but. Yeah, okay.
I, I have read this document front to back so many times recently.
Boundary, other than blah, 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 divides a lot in existence, which is this. You know, residential use is what he wants to do, maybe extend it up to thirty feet into the adjacent district from. From AR one into AR two, in this case. He would get four hundred and thirty feet, but he likely needs to build beyond four hundred and thirty feet. And then the quest is.
Four hundred and thirty feet from the right of way. Not from the road.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the right of way varies, it might give you fifteen or twenty feet.
Yeah, that gives you even more, because the town owns the first ten, fifteen feet of your property.
Right, and so, yeah. So the question is, is whether I, if I have to begin there or end there. So the site pla- if the site plan starts within that, i- if the requirement is the site plan starts within, say, four hundred and thirty feet of the right of way. There's, I think, a reasonable chance that that would. That would fit and fit within area one.
It's specifically, it's four hundred feet from the right of way.
But it doesn't say starts, Judy, right, it just has to, the use may be extended. So I think.
AR one, the definition of AR one is four hundred feet from the right of way.
Right.
But this place.
And the right of way varies with just about every street in town, so.
But let's, Judy, I'm thinking that if, if we draw a, a line in parcel, in lot five. Where the outer edge of that, uh, you know, four hundred feet from the right of way plus thirty feet. Can his building has, can his house, must, the, um. The edge of his house that is furthest away from the right of way, start at that line? Or end at that line, or touch that line?
Well, you'd have to ask the building inspector if. Because he obviously, I would, I would think that as long as it was. If it ended at that line, it would be fine, and the septic could go wherever. It's the house.
A house was in the, if it's in the property, if it touched it, I would say it's in it.
Yeah, but that's a building inspector, so this seems to be an issue that needs.
We can't, we can't define this, this is Jim Hawkins.
Yeah, we can't, but there, this may be a bug that we need to fix at some time soon.
Yeah, if we can figure out how to fix.
The bug is access frontage, because. I think there's, the frontage issue is a problem.
Well, well, this is why you're asking this policy objective question. Like, by creating AR two, I understand that AR two, the, the creation of AR two was driven by. The desire of adding this cluster, cluster zoning bylaw. But it seemed to, because AR two, the AR two zone in Wadley is so, you know, pervasive. We've, we've essentially said there are certain kinds of things that we do and don't wanna happen within AR two. And maybe I'm asking. Do we not really want residential structures built in AR two? Is the policy goal of AR two to limit single-family construction and in AR two? Like, basically, was AR two trying to achieve the goal of preventing Mr. Buser from doing what he wants to do? By limiting prince. Or is just an.
I told you what the goal was.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We wanted, nobody wanted to limit. Residential housing, we wanted to keep it from being in large developments like Pine Plains.
Okay, well, obviously, there were other policy objectives with AR two. Leading to making the minimum lot sizes larger and changing the frontages and so forth. And you say all of that was just driven, all in conjunction with the open space cluster bylaw.
Entirely.
So then no one said, you know what, we want to protect the land in Wadley that sits more than four hundred. So feet back from town rights of way and require. Large lots back there, if you're gonna do single-family homes, or, and then in fact, we wanna create AR one. To encourage single-family homes to be built close to roads, or at least within four hundred feet.
No, we, we created, we created AR one. Because that's where most houses were built, we, we essentially replicated the existing.
I see, okay. And I, and I noted that, and, and Judy concurred that there was, there's an interesting. Internal inconsistency between what we've encountered here, that it does seem like. Mr. Buser might need to obtain a variance, depending on the placement of his. Single-family home within this parcel. Single family home within this parcel. But if you looked into the flag lot, this is not a flag lot. So flag lots don't apply in this case. Uh, but in the flag lot bylaw, which is one seventy one dash twenty four dash one. There's an interesting paragraph B that says for minimum lot size and other dimensional requirements. A flag lot shall be considered to be in the district where it has street frontage. So that. Like parcel four, if parcel four were a flag lot. Which I don't think it is, because it has to have a, be declared as such or. Have a permit as such, but if four here were a flag lot. Then the entire parcel four flag lot would be considered an AR one. Because it has frontage there. Which seems like. An interesting idea.
Well, that would totally invalidate the premise behind creating AR two.
Yeah, right. This would be a workaround to AR two.
Would, it would, it would. It would undermine. The premise for creating AR two. Which was to create bigger lots. It was a deliberate attempt to encourage. Encourage preserving open space by encouraging people to cluster. And people could get more, you can get more housing in a cluster than you could with the old zoning. So it allowed greater density. But it, it required a certain specificity about the where, the way it was created. So it, it certainly wasn't intended to. Undermine single family housing. You can get up to fifty, seventy percent more. In a cluster zoning unit. But it requires you to set aside a certain amount of open space in doing it. Cluster housing is cheaper.
Well, I don't think that.
And, and the assumption was that, of course, he would be building a road. So there would be frontage for the cluster housing.
Yeah, so in this case, this particular scenario is an unintended. Adverse outcome of all of this.
Yeah.
And no reason to believe that we as a town want to prevent Mr. Busev from. Building a single family home on his parcel. Wherever he can place it. And really, I don't think we particularly. Should care where he places that parcel relative that AR one, AR two boundary. But the bylaws.
I'm just, this is probably not the case, but North Hampton Public Water goes by his house. You're not allowed to tie into it though, right?
Yeah, I don't.
No.
Yeah, um, so I don't know that we, we don't have much. We don't have much help offered to you, except I think we have concurrence on. What your situation is and that it's, it wasn't anything intended. By the planning board when the AR one, AR two. Districts and boundaries were created.
Sure, part, part of the reason that I've been kind of pursuing this and wanted to open the dialogue around it is that. The most recent redrawing of. Lot five was in two thousand and fifteen. In my understanding is that it was with the express purpose. Of allowing that upper zone to conform to the bylaws. It doesn't appear that that was successful and that's not anybody's problem on this call. Um, but it does, you know, it does seem. Uh, with sort of the interpretation of the bylaws I have is that. It does, the lot does appear to conform to the. Square footage requirement, but doesn't conform to the frontage requirement for AR two, which is. Unfortunate, uh, but, but that does, but it does also seem that like I have also gone through all of the, the. ZBA portion of the, of the code and all the variants, and it does seem that. While this may be an unintended consequence, that the, the requirements for obtaining a variance. That this type of lot actually kind of checks all of the boxes for something that might be likely to obtain that. Yeah, so I think from, for my purposes, really in the position that I'm in with this property is that I. With contractually where I am with it, I should be able to go. Conduct the survey, develop a site plan and bring the site plan. Before the ZBA and obtain a variance before I would go further. And, and I think really what I'm. I'm just trying to get my order of operations correct here, so that I understand where things stand with, with, with the law.
Well, I wish you luck. I think, I think that's the right procedure.
Okay, yeah, I think I, I appreciate the, the feedback. I think that's, that's really helpful, just trying to. Not get too far ahead of myself with this and, and, and understand, you know, trying to limit. What was that?
I commend you for doing all your research. I wish most people were as thorough.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, well, well, um. Hopefully, hopefully it pans out in the end, so.
I, Michael is a builder.
Yeah.
Um, I strongly recommend you get a perk test and know where it's going to go because that's going to drive everything and where that house is going to be in that property. Either of the.
No, and so.
That's a, that's the number one thing you gotta know.
So yeah, contractually, the, yeah, contractually the seller is on the hook for the perk test. What we want to do is what we need to get, we were going to run the survey first. So that we have a better idea of like where we might want to put the, the site plan. And then once we have that, we'll, we'll perk it in, in the appropriate place.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's also, um, soils can be tough out there and you can, you have the, the soils tested at UMass in lieu of, um. The, the physical weight from the water to go down the hole. They can just take a sample, bring it to UMass and they'll, they'll tell you there.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's, that's good to, that's good to know that that's helpful, so. Yeah, is that through the wet center? They'll do that?
Your engineer will do that, that does the perk test. He'll send it to the UMass lab. They do it.
Okay.
There's a whole chain of custody of things.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure. Great.
When, in a, in a case like this where. Um, uh, property goes before the ZBA seek a variance, is there any precedent or. Use or purpose or even appropriateness for the planning board to provide any input to that city making? Like, would we have a right to share and support? We would not.
They don't have to have site plan review for.
No, it's not site, I'm just saying that if he's going to the ZBA. Does the planning board.
Variances are, are totally up to them.
Sure, Diane, I do understand.
Is it a variance or a special permit?
The variance. It would be a variance against the dimensional requirements. Because again, the point is. If the interpretation is that the minimum lot size has to be the sub portion of the parcel within AR two. Then there's no way you meet that without a variance.
Uh, I, I actually think that in the conversations that I've had with Jim Hawkins is that it's actually the opposite. It's that. I meet the dimensional requirements. I do not meet the frontage requirements for AR two. So I have the hundred and twenty thousand square feet and it's total lot size. If I only have two hundred feet of frontage and not three hundred, that is the problem.
That's so weird because then what he seems to be saying is that. The three hundred feet is the frontage required for a parcel in AR two. Normally we would look at your parcel, it fronts on a public way and say it's an AR one. And the rules of AR one would apply to it in its entirety. And what Jim seems to be telling you is that if you choose to place your. Single family dwelling in the AR two portion of your parcel, now. All the rules for AR two apply to the entire parcel, including the three hundred foot. Frontage requirement and that. Well, that seems.
That. Well, that seems like it's actually, i- i- is, is I hear it. It seems like what Judy has explained is the intent of it actually. Kind of makes sense to me is that if you're going to have. Larger parcels, you want, they wanted larger frontage and really make people spread out versus try to get them to be close together.
Yeah, but only when you're clustering, not when they're doing single family.
Sure, sure. And so I think, but, but I think either way.
Family is clustering, if they're not mutually exclusive.
Right, you get a bunch of single family homes together, right? That's, yeah. Um, okay, but I think, I mean, I think either way does seem that this. The topography of this lot, because Hog Mountain is so steep right there. Really is dri- is driving the placement. I, I said this in my message to the zoning board that like. If it worked out that I had fit the whole thing in AR one and get around not have to deal with this. I would, but I just don't think that's the, that's the case. I'm just trying to figure out what the. When that eventuality doesn't play out, then, okay, how, what, what are the necessary steps? And so. I think.
Yes. There's certain title five rules about how much naturally occurring soil you have over ledge, which you probably have up there. In my experience, we've had to move systems four or five hundred feet away to make them comply to that rule.
Yeah, so one of the interesting things about this lot that is just a little bit of an aside is actually the section where, where. Talking about wanting to build is that it actually gets pretty far away from the ledge at that point and is, becomes much, much flatter. And more like a lot of the rest of the valley where it's much, much sandier soils. And so in some ways, it's like the lot sets up really well and there's a natural location to put a residence there. It's just that it happens to straddle this boundary and create a zoning complication, but. I think that being said, it's. In, in, in reading the laws and having had plenty of conversation at this point, it seems like. A variance is going to be the way that needs to happen. And, and, but it also appears as though the, the rule, the regulations around the variance. While the. Conforming zoning bylaws, this may be an unintended consequence. It does actually appear as the, the variance. Guidance was actually set up pretty well to handle this. And so we'll see how it goes. I mean, obviously, the zoning board will do what it does, but. But we'll try to make the case. But yeah, I appreciate everybody's feedback. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's late and, um, we're at the end of our agenda, so, um.
Right, Sylvie has been here for a bit.
Excuse me?
Sylvie has been here for a bit.
Oh, I see. Regar- oh, she joined us regarding, I thought we passed the floodplain bylaw update. Sylvie, hi.
She did. She, she's not, I don't think she's aware that we, I tried to cover it in your absence.
Oh, um. Uh, I got logged on maybe like ten minutes late, but I didn't realize we'd already gotten through it, but, um, that's okay, um. I, um, I, I don't know what you went over already, but, um, I had spoken to Nadia, um, and, uh. She felt that the, the floodplain bylaw was in good shape, um. Uh, and, um. My understanding is that the, the most recent draft that I have incorporates any comments that she may have given you in the past, um, before my arrival. Um, but she didn't, she didn't personally foresee too many, um, difficulties with what we had been, um. Talking about with our agricultural exemptions. Um, but, uh, she also sent me the floodplain management, um, requirements for agricultural structures document, um. That, um, Brandon and Judy, you may have had a chance to take a little bit of a look at, so that should be helpful. Um, in, uh, forming our application process. Um, and I've taken a look at a few other, um, floodplain development permit applications, um. And I've reached out to Jim also to see if I could talk with him a bit about it. Um, haven't done that as of yet, um. But that's kind of where things stand for now. I don't know if you have any feedback you wanted to share with me, but, um.
You said you. Been exchanging communications with Scott Jackson.
Oh, yes, um, so I, I did talk to Scott and, um. His concern, I think, was not, um, uh, that the concom might, um, be, you know, having some, um. Participation in the application process, but just that, uh, the town administrator or, um, you know, me or whoever is the, uh. Designated as a floodplain administrator would be the one who would be, um. Uh, making a final recommendation on, on allowing the permit or not. Um, so I, I did, um. Reach out to him again just to ask, um, if he had any particular, um, concerns about the language in the bylaw. Um, as it pertains to the concom, um, so I'll let you know about that, but, um. I, I, I suspect that, uh. As long as the concom is not, um, you know, wielding the bylaw, um. Independent of me or whoever else might be the floodplain administrator, that they would have no problem, um. You know, playing a part in the process, um, but I will confirm all of that.
You mentioned something in your email to me about establishing. Principles. For that, that's maybe not the right word, uh, that Scott had agreed that they could advise, given that there was a set of. Principles that they'd be working from.
Well, I think that we need to, um, have the, develop the. Well, one thing I wanted to ask Jim is just, I, I, I know that we probably have, you know, permitting applications that, um, we can, um. Sort of go off of and we need to develop, um, a floodplain permitting application that would be independent of that. Um, and I think that if we have some guidelines, um, that would be tied to that application, um, that's what Scott was talking about, I think, is have. Hmm, good.
I, I agree.
Okay, um, so yeah, as long as we have those, um, criteria that we're looking at, um, for, for that review process. Um, and, and then we're going through and, and making sure that whatever project is, um. Uh, is brought to us as meeting those criteria and going through the proper procedure, then, then that would be acceptable. It was my, my impression.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Sylvie.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other business before we wrap up? Here are none. I'll just, before I take a motion to adjourn, I'll remind everyone, we're gonna, you and I are gonna do a little signing. Little joint signing party here.
Yep.
Uh, now let everyone know when A and R is ready, you can come down and do more signing and we have actions to prepare. For two public hearings for the end of March, one on the Bean, Common Driveway, and the other on the zoning bylaw.
Do we need all signatures on that?
We will need at least three.
Okay.
So we'll get two tonight.
Come tomorrow.
Yeah, and I'll get that all up. So just, that'll all be situated. Sarah, you have the key. I'll put it in the same tabletop with a sharpie in the room that we have for the planning board down the hall where the assessor used to sit. Okay, and then. We, I think three is going to be enough, but Judy, if you want to come on down and add your signature. You can feel do that. Okay, very good. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, 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 Sarah.
I have a couple other signing questions. You and Judy and I have been talking about something we need to sign. Will that be there?
I'm a little behind on that. Now I have, but I will, that is, it's, it's coming. It'll probably be, it'll probably be like, I'll get to the printer like this weekend and early next week.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
And also, Mary, are there some things for me to sign? We never got Brack to Brant, I think.
That's all done. The, the invoicing for the nurse farm. Uh, thing is done, signs will be delivered, so we're all up to date on that.
Okay, so our bills are up to date.
Our bills as far as we know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded, Sarah seconded. I think that's good enough for me. We're adjourned until, uh, our next public hearing at the end of March, the bylaw.